Good morning. It is 9:01 on December 12, 2023. I am Chairman Luke Ahmet. And Commissioner Steve Bradshaw is present. Commissioner Williams is not available for today's meeting. And I call this regularly scheduled business meeting of the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, the order. And now, please rise for the invocation from Pastor Mark Hammer.
Let me pray. Father God, I just thank you for the men and women that just helped to make our community what it is. But I pray for your divine love being poured out in our community, to be known, to be experienced. Pray, Father, that you would graciously forgive us, because there's a lot of times, God, that we mess things up. Thank you for giving us grace. I ask, Father, that the meeting today would just spark good conversations that's going to continue to allow this community to grow in the best way it's possible, to be a shining light in a great state that we get to call home. Lord, we love you. We ask that you be glorified in our time right now. And it's in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I just got to throw something out as per our discussion from last week.
Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mr. Moore. This is not the time. So you will have an opportunity to speak, Mr. Moore?
Well, this is about the time to speak, because I'm just going to, we've been, we've got an argument or dialogue before or after the meeting.
Mr. Moore.
I was going to be you both, before and after.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So, good morning. We have now done the pledge. I have added a new component to the agenda, and this will be going on every week. And it's Robert's Rules of Order and how we are going to conduct ourselves as a Board of County Commissioners. Why order? And I also want to begin with the agenda, which will partially address some of the concerns that was brought forward last week. I'm going to start with Idaho statute. Authority of this board starts with statute. And that comes from the Constitution, and it is delegated to us as county officials. But it initially rises from the sovereign citizens of this country. And they delegate that authority to our government. We have made that decision. Statute is what guides us in our actions. Now, Idaho Code 74-204, which is Transparent and Ethical Government, Chapter 2, Open Meetings Law. And it says notice of meetings and agendas. This is our regularly scheduled business meeting. And the regularly scheduled business meeting, so no less than five calendar days meeting notice and a 48-hour agenda notice. Now, what does it say about the agenda? An agenda shall be required for each meeting. The agenda shall be posted in the same manner as the notice of the meeting. An agenda may be amended, provided that a good faith effort is made to include in the original agenda notice all items known to be probable items of discussion. An agenda item that requires a vote shall be identified on the agenda as an action item to provide notice that action may be taken on that item. Identifying an item as an action item on the agenda does not require a vote to be taken on the item. Idaho statute is silent on the matter of which the order of agenda is carried out. There is no clear manner, and so each deliberative body and each of the 44 counties gets to make that determination. It is not established in statute, which brings me into Robert's Rules of Order. Why do we use Robert's Rules of Order? Well, why do we have government? We are a system of laws so that we can determine how we are going to operate in civil society. Robert's Rules of Order provides a way for us to manage meetings that is civil and hopefully efficient. This meeting is the business meeting. So let's start with county ordinance, and the distinction being statute is created by the state legislature. Ordinance is created by us at the county level. The purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Regular business meetings do not constitute public hearings wherein the public has the right to be heard on every agendized item. However, at the discretion of the chair, everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue, if recognized by the chair. Everyone may be afforded an opportunity to speak on a particular issue, but any unrecognized comments or disruptive behavior will be grounds for removal from the board meeting by the chair and may subject the person being removed to criminal prosecution according to law. The purpose for the public comment section, segment of the Board of County Commissioners' business meetings is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to individual board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain, under any circumstances, comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. And that ordinance refers back to 74-204, and that is why we cannot legally take action on an item that a member of the public brings to us, because it would not have been publicly agendized. And therefore, it would be out of compliance. So today, and I've been speaking with people, and I'm very fortunate in this position that I have many people who bring my shortcomings to my attention. And one of them is, what is the role of the chair? Well, the role of the chair, according to Robert's Rules, page 12, is to keep order. One person is chosen to preside over the meeting. This person enforces the rules and designates who is to speak at any given time. The presiding officer may be elected specifically for the meeting and is then called the chairman. More commonly, he or she is elected to serve for a term of a year or more. We have a chair in Bonner County. We have a vice chair. And then, what I'd like to get to is debate, and then we'll discuss amongst the board, limiting debate. Speech limits in debate. Now, this is Robert's Rules of Order, and Bonner County adopted this not whole cloth. We adopted Robert's Rules of Order as a framework for how we would work. Because if we were to adopt it whole cloth, then we would be in a parliamentary nightmare where if we didn't have our gerons and our apostrophes done correctly, then nothing would get done. And this is a business meeting, and we are here to serve. You may speak and debate twice on any debatable motion on the same day. Each time, you may speak for up to 10 minutes. These limits apply to any organization that has not adopted special rules setting up other limits as may do. You cannot save time or transfer it to someone else. So you cannot, for example, speak for five minutes your first time up and 15 minutes the second time. Unlike the practice in Congress, you cannot yield the floor to let someone else speak on your time. Debate issues, not personalities. One of the most important rules of debate is that the proposal, not the member, is the subject of debate. Vigorous debate about the merits of a motion is central to the very idea of a deliberative assembly. When the arguments on all sides are fully aired, the group is most likely to come to a wise decision. Criticizing an opponent's reasoning, however, is different from criticizing the opponent personally. If debate were allowed to include personal attacks, it might intimidate many from taking part in the debate who might otherwise make important points. There is a reason why Robert's Rules has been used for over 100 years in order to manage a meeting effectively. And I will tell you as the chair that I intend to do a better job moving forward. And so as only a discussion item for today, and the general public will have the opportunity to comment at the end of the meeting where our public comments are. Commissioner, what do you think about what Robert has to say about debate? Speech limits in debate, so it's twice and up to 10 minutes, or debating issues and not personalities?
Well, it should be debating issues, not personalities, and I think time limit would be good. It's a shame that the last 11 months that we've been brought to this point, because the four years previous to this, we were pretty open. We had good conversations. We had good public comments. Things worked smoothly. But that has not been the case in the last 11 months. And so I don't see where we have a lot of choice but to start becoming more formal. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of it.
Okay. And in regard to the meeting agenda, this is published by our office, and no, I did not come up with it myself, but it says the B O C C Meeting Agenda Submission Procedure. Personally, I think that commissioners should have to follow the same rules as the staff. Why? Because it's uniform and it's transparent. It also makes it easier for the public when we put motions on the floor if there is a memorandum that accompanies it. This is an example, folks, that you can see on your packet of the memorandum. And within this B O C C Meeting Agenda Submission Procedure, it says, here is what is required. Create a packet, create a memo, and to send your agenda items to auditing and legal for review prior to submission, submit your agenda items to the B O C C office. So what I'd also like to ask Commissioner is if you think that there should be memos in regards to, it makes it easier for the recording of the minutes, and it is easier for the general public to be able to participate if they know. For example, last week, there was an agendized item that was workplace environment. And following that, there was a motion that was put on the floor to move H R back. Now, I may not, I don't see how, if it's workplace environment, but then your motion is to move H R back under the Office of the Prosecutor. Those are not simpatico from this commissioner's point of view. Do you have any thoughts on that, Commissioner Bradshaw?
They need to say.
So what about, should, as a board, should we follow the same procedures as everybody else?
You would think so.
I agree. Thank you. Our next agendized item is to adopt the order of agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I will step down from the chair and second the motion. Is there any discussion?
None.
Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I move to approve this consent agenda as presented.
I'll step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any discussion among, about the consent? Actually, hold on. Let me go back. General public, are there comments on the consent agenda? And for the public, please approach the microphone, state your name for the record, and comments will be addressed to the chair. Hearing none. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners regarding the consent agenda?
None.
Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Rose Dale.
Our next agendized item is Clerk Rose Dale.
Good morning, everybody. Morning, Commissioners. Before you, I have claims batch number five for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $967,020.5 and demand batch number five in the amount of $146,950.6, totaling $1,113,970.11 for your approval.
I move to approve payment of FY '24 claims and demands in batch number five,
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any comments from the public in regards to claims and demands batch number five, Mr. Patterson?
Let me, so there's some big demands. The big ones, it's predictable here. The big ones are medical in the amount of $84,800 and biweekly fuel, $5,600. Road and bridge, $14,000. Those take up the line, but the medical is the largest one.
Clerk Cameron, for the record. So you come up with these, these demand batches for, you know, millions of dollars, but there's never any, anything showing what that money is. That's my money. I'd like to know what it is you're spending over a million dollars on. You know, every time you come up here, it's a million dollars here, a million dollars there, but there's never disclosure of what the, where the money is going.
We can give you a copy of this. I mean, this is.
I would like that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is that not posted online? It is posted online in the, in the B O C C packet. So that is available and has been available for a number of months.
Should we get him a nameplate that says million dollar, Mike?
I would like to see him doing that, but, Ms. Cranwell.
Jennifer Cranwell, for the record. What, can you give a little more detail on the $84,000 for medical, please?
Uh, well, I'm not the best person to, but I can say that we're self-insured, and that was the medical, medical expense for this year that comes in a demand form. So every, actually, the commissioners might be better to speak on this, but we get a bill from H R with the medical bills that are due, and they require it on a demand because of a payment window. So.
Is that like a month's worth?
No, it's probably even less than that, unfortunately.
So, we are self-insured, and we are one of two counties of the 44 in the state of Idaho that has chosen this path. We, there is a variety of different insurance policies that are required, such as for the physical property. We have for personnel and.
This is medical.
Yeah, but humans are expensive. But last, last week I was asked, and this is also why we have a, we have an insurance person who is the expert. And for the medical insurance, we buy a policy for the year, and then that is prorated over the 12 months. So if, at $84,000, but I'd have to look at what this particular one is.
We have claims coming in that can exceed that.
And we have claims coming in that exceeds it. I would prefer to get back to you and give you an accurate answer, rather than giving you one that I'm going to have to apologize for later. So if you would like.
So, so to be clear, so that, that's a contract issue between the board and health insurance. When those bills come due, it's my office. We have to pay them, but we don't have a say in creating those bills.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
By statute, if the board is responsible by statute to deal with insurance, the clerk is responsible by statute to make sure that we aren't doing any funny business in regards to giving our buddies fake contracts and et cetera. Different roles by statute. There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
None.
Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Next, I have fiscal year '22 EMS batch number five in the amount of $35,102 and demand, demands for EMS batch five in the amount of $902.36, totaling $36,436 for your approval.
Move to approve payment of the FY '24 EMS claims and demands in batch number five totaling $36,436.
I will step down from the chair and second the motion. Is there any public comment, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, shouldn't say.
So the demands, EMS only gets demands about half the time, maybe even a little less. I was wondering what's going on this time.
So the, with the EMS or with all the demands?
The demands, specifically.
So EMS is one group. All the rest of the demands cover everybody but EMS. So we have road and bridge, everybody. So you have all those. That's why we always have something in the others. EMS has $902 in demands. There's $375 for training, and there's $527 for air tags and Sharpies.
That's another word for bill due.
Seeing no other public comment, is there any discussion amongst the board?
None.
Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Rose Dale. Our next agendized item is Justice Services with Director Ron Stoltz. Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Morning, Ron.
Ron Stoltz, Director of Justice Services, for the record. I have two items this morning for your consideration. The first one is the the annual financial report to the Department of Juvenile Corrections. As you're aware, we get three separate streams of funds from, from the state, specifically IDJC, one of which is our Juvenile Corrections Act funds. We receive tobacco tax funds, and we also receive lottery tax funds. And annually, we're required to report back to them how much of those funds we have on hand and how they're used. And so it's this, it's that time of year to report. So basically, it's just needs your approval. This report was created by Nancy in the auditor's office. So it's not me that keeps track of those funds. It's actually Nancy who, who does that and creates the report. So. Anyway, I'm just asking that you will approve that so I can send it back to the state so they know how much of the state funds we still have on hand.
Are there any highlights of this that are that different than previous year's record?
Um, our lottery tax funds are up a little bit, which is good. That means we've had more winners in the state of Idaho this year. I'd like to volunteer to be the next one. We're, we actually have $74,760 in our lottery tax fund, which is a little higher than, like I said, normal. So we'll, we'll turn that around and use that to purchase something or, or repair something that won't go back to the taxpayers. We're probably, probably earmarking a new transport vehicle for juvenile detention. We have, currently have two. One's a newer, it's like a 2018 Chevy Traverse. The other is like a 2000 Ford Explorer that is due to, is due to be replaced. So we'll probably address that after the first of the year.
23 years out of a county vehicle. That's stellar.
Not too bad.
Out of any government.
But other than that, it's, it's pretty on par with what we've had in the past.
All right. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the Juvenile Justice '22, '23 Annual Financial Report for Bonner County to the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections as prepared by the Bonner County Auditor's Department.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public comment on this agendized item?
You're too old to be a juvenile.
Senility comes in, and that's, you fall back into that. Kevin Moore for the record. So I went a little off topic, I guess. The $74,000, that's a yearly thing then?
It's all dependent on, on how many people win the lottery. It's on the tax that those people pay in from lottery winnings. So they're bigger. Usually, they're not taxed unless they're a larger win. I have asked multiple times over the years what percentage, how they decide on how they divvy that up, but nobody's ever been able to give me a good answer as to how that happens. They just give us a percentage of, a small percentage of it comes to the counties for juvenile, juvenile justice stuff. So.
But typically.
But that's what we collected basically over this last year is what the state sent us based on winnings.
For a year?
For the year, yeah.
And so tobacco, would that be like a similar amount?
So that's, so that's, yeah, we have, I think we have $93,000 in our tobacco, and that's solely based on, on taxes for tobacco, vapes, chewing tobacco, cigarettes, any tobacco-related products. Kind of like a sin tax to some degree.
If people, if people smoke more, he gets more. If they smoke less, he gets less.
Yep. But we are not encouraging from this body to take up smoking.
Don't start smoking. Or to go to juvenile. Or chew tobacco.
I have invested $20 in the lottery, but none of that because I'm not a winner.
Yeah. Again, like I said, I'm happy to volunteer to, to contribute to that tax. Unfortunately, I'm kind of like you, Commissioner Ahmet. I've not.
You're an investor?
Yeah, I'm an investor.
Well, it just interests me. It seems like that's, you know, quite a mount or whatever, but, you know, I guess big government, this stuff happens, whatever, '94 and '74. And so that typically happens every year, just to be in your account for using whatever, buying a new car or whatever you say.
If we have no winners, then we don't get anything. So it's, yeah.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, for the record. So we got two, three of the, two of the three amounts totaled. What's, what's the third one?
So the third, the third one is the Juvenile Corrections Act funds, and we have $74,000, $74,067 in that account. And that, and that's funds that, that come from the federal level that come to the Department of Juvenile Corrections, and then they disperse that based on population of juveniles in, within your county.
Fed to the state to the county.
Yep, and that can be used for programming for kids. We can use it partially for salaries.
Programming for kids?
Programming, like treatment, counseling.
And they've been programmed properly. He wouldn't get to meet them.
That's right.
We're getting ahead of schedule.
Programs for kids, perhaps is a better way to say it instead of programming.
All right. I will close the public comment on that item. Is there any discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Second item I have is a maintenance agreement for our generator that, that backs up the juvenile detention facility. It's recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve the Western State's Maintenance Agreement for the term of January 1, 2024 to December 31 of 2026 at a total cost of $4,975.90. A fee of $1,600 per annual visit. And that, that did actually go up $200 per year. I know Doug will be, I actually already told him, but I'll let everybody else know too. They did want to raise it almost $600 per year, but we had a discussion with them, and they, they did, they were willing to negotiate and drop that price back down. So it is only a $200 increase over the, the current maintenance agreement that we have. Maintenance services for the generator is located at the Bonner County Justice Services Building. And by state standards, we do have, we are required to have a backup generator. So it's not something that we just say, well, we don't really need that. We, by state standards, we do have to have a backup generator for the juvenile facility.
I suspect that kicks on every winter, at least once.
Uh, you, well, it, well, it has.
Every windstorm.
It does, it does kick on a couple times a year, because it'll also kick on periodically just to run itself tests.
Part of its maintenance.
But they always come out, they come out twice a year just to do ma, general maintenance on it. And that, and they always kick it on. So it always comes on periodically, but usually the power, power will, it doesn't go out often out there, but it does occasionally go out.
I would entertain a motion.
Well, all righty then. I move to approve the Western State's Maintenance Agreement for the term 1/1/2024 to 12/31/2026 as set forth above for maintenance service for the generator located in the Justice Services Building as previously approved by legal.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public comment on this agendized item? Hearing none. Is there any further discussion amongst the board?
None.
Roll call vote? Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Director. Our next agendized item is planning with Director Gubel.
We'll go with Travis instead.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll take Travis.
All right. Thanks. Planning, uh, Planning Department, Travis Haller, for the record. We have an item in front of you. It's a planning file SS 0006-22 Fisher Haven Estates. It's a short plat of approximately 19.5 acres of land to create four lots, each approximately 4.8 acres per Bonner County Revised Code 12-644C. In lieu of completing all improvements on the final plat, the subdivider mel, uh, shall enter into a surety agreement with the board. And that's what we have in front of you. The, the engineering improvements have been reviewed and approved by the county engineers. The developer provided a surety agreement per the code and a cashier's check of 150% for the remaining improvements in accordance with the surety agreement in front of you and the final plat approval. We're just recommending approval of the final plat.
Has it been approved by legal?
It has. And that's, that should also be in the packet.
Okay.
Yep.
This is not on our cover page.
Okay. I move to approve the surety agreement between Bonner County and Forest Phillips Construction LLC for Fisher Haven Estates in the amount of $104,076.30 for the completion of the improvement shown on the engineer's cost estimate. Further approve the final plat of Fisher Haven's estate, planning file number SS0006-22, and authorize the chair to sign the final plat.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public comment on this agendized item? Mrs. Patterson? Excuse me.
Maureen Patterson for the record. This is just generally to planning itself. Private property rights is as much a hallmark of a free society as is brotherly love. The Bible, our life's guidebook, speaks often, thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself. Here is only one example in the Bible to how the Bible guises for productive planning of a town. Unlike the rest of the tribes, the Levites were to live in towns scattered throughout the promised land where they could teach the people the law and apply it to local courts. In books, Numbers, Chapter 35, verse 2 to 5, details the amount of pasture land each town should have. Measuring from the edge of town, the area for pasture was to extend outward a thousand cubits, about 1,500 feet in each direction, east, south, west, and north. Verse 2, command the children of Israel that they give unto the Levites of the inheritance of their position, cities to dwell in, and you shall give also unto the Levite suburbs for the cities rounded about them. And the cities shall they have to dwell in, the suburbs of them shall be for their cattle, for their goods, and for all their beasts. And the suburbs of the cities which you shall give unto the Levites shall reach from the wall of the city and outward a thousand cubits round about. Thus, a town was designed with pasture land extending beyond the town diameter in each direction. As the town diameter grows and absorbs the closest pasture, additional pasture land is added so that the pasture remains a thousand cubits beyond the town limits in each direction. This creates a social economic structure that supports rising productivity. The Bible has a remarkably sophisticated example of civic policy creating conditions for economic growth. Private property rights, yes, with diligence to planning where love of your neighbor is held in high regard. This is the main purpose of the comprehensive plan. Please follow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. Mr. Moore, I will also say that hopefully your comments are going to be on this specific item.
Property rights.
Uh, that is not the item that we are here for. So if you, if you're, that is for public comment, sir. Edit this, we are, the agendized item, and I will repeat it.
Well, I'd like to just add for what we just hear, what we just heard. Do you allow that?
Mr. Moore, I did. And now I am issuing a warning that we are going to stick with the agendized item and that we are going to follow that. But thank you. So if you would like to make a comment on this agendized item, which is the surety agreement between Bonner No, that is not what we are here to discuss. We are here to discuss the surety agreement between Bonner County and Forest Phillips Construction.
Well, it had to do with subdivision. And so, yeah, property rights we're talking about.
Mr. Moore, that is not accurate. The comment is in regards, and the agendized item is this specific item. But I will gladly listen to your comments in the public comment section. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments today on the surety agreement? Hearing none. Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners?
Sure.
Roll call vote. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you. Our next agendized item is the B O C C with our operations manager, Mrs. Reinbold.
Good morning, Jesse Reinbold for the record. I have two items for your consideration today. The first one is reappointment of members to the Bonner County West Snowmobile Advisory Committee. We have two snowmobile advisory committees in the county per Idaho statute. One is in Priest River, Priest Lake. One is in Sandpoint. And the following members have terms that have expired in 2023. All wish to remain on the board. There was an extensive advertisement period in 2022 with little to no interest from the public at large. This board has very specific member qualifications and you really have to be a member of the snowmobiling community. Advertising costs being high and this membership is seasonal, these boards do not run in the summer. They run from about November to late March, maybe. And with the unique qualifications, we will advertise again in 2025. And the following members are to be reappointed for a two-year term with expiration dates as listed. Jim Peron, Larry Bryant, Mike Corto, Doug Cassett, and Keith Hanson have all requested to be reappointed for a two-year term.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2023-94, reappointing and appointing members to the Bonner County West Snowmobile Advisory Committee.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public comment on the reappointment of these members? Mr. Kramer?
Mr. Kramer for the record. Are those paid positions?
They are not. They do have groomer operators that are paid. Susan Lee, Susan Lee Pete Hughes can speak on that. Is there his employees? But these are volunteer board positions.
Is it similar to the planning commission though, that depending upon their mileage, they might get paid to travel to the meetings here?
Do you pay them mileage, Pete? No.
And oh, but there's two different plates. The Sandpoint Board meets here. Our, what's the correct term? Is it the Sandpoint rumors? East Bonner Snowmobile meets here in Sandpoint. And where does West Bonner meet, Director? And they meet at the Groomer Barn. Two different committees, two different meeting locations. Occasionally, they come together to celebrate snow when we haven't. Did I get that right?
I would say that they live for snow.
God bless them. Seeing no other public comments, is there any discussion amongst the board in regards to these reappointments?
Eben.
Roll call vote. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries and the members are reappointed.
The second item for your consideration is reappointment of members to the Board of Community Guardian. For those of you that don't know what the Board of Community Guardian is, these individuals act as a guardian for incapacitated individuals where a person is in need of a guardian or conservator. So basically protective care. These members go through an extensive background check and they're trained on HIPAA and it's not an easy board to, to be on, as you might imagine. Veronica Dixon is actually the designated clerk to this board. There's a lot of confidentiality surrounding this board and she works with the Prosecutor's Office and assistance to, to maintain this board. But the members might meet once a quarter. So this resolution is to reappoint members to the Board of Community Guardian. Mary Franzel and Shaquina Cardona currently serve on the Board of Community Guardian. Their current terms are set to expire on December 15, 2023, and they have expressed their desire to continue to serve. The term limits, oh, four years.
All right. Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 2023-95, reappointing Mary Franzel and Shaquina Cardona to the Bonner County Board of Community Guardian for a four-year term beginning on December 15, 2023, and expiring on December 15, 2027.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public comment on the reappointment of these members?
Yes, Kevin Moore for the record. So is this the same entity that Kevin was on? I don't remember his last name.
Kevin, Kevin Rothenberger was the, he was not on the board. He is, he was the director of assistance or indigent services for the county, county, county. There's been some changes in state laws, so that, that particular program is, is slowly going away. So we do have a sort of an interim. Terry Schultz is the interim director of assistance until that's completely cleared up. But yes, previously, he was.
So this is taking the place of what Kevin did? Or there are two separate entities?
These are two separate things. His department was separate from this. This board has been in existence as long as I can remember. So what happens is if you, if someone, say someone goes to the hospital, they have no family, they have no, no anybody. What will typically happen is the hospital or any other entity or place that they're at will actually fill out an application for a conservatorship and it'll go to this board.
That's what I thought that Kevin's job was, whatever. I didn't realize it was settling, but, but they kind of work together.
Yes.
The board manages, Director Roth, or Kevin Rothenberger, he was responsible for paying the bills from the county funds. So one is responsible for making decisions of those, of those people. They're the guardians of their care. And the county was responsible to pay bills because we were, we're the payer of last resort. But the state has changed statute and those services are no longer funneled through the county in that particular fashion. Seeing no other public comment on this, is there any discussion amongst the board?
None.
Roll call vote. Yes?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Reinbold. Our next agendized item is, I'm curious, Ms. Teddy Lupton.
All right. Teddy Lupton, Director of Public Works for the record. Facilities and engineering overestimated the amount of capital construction carryover for FY24. And based on this, we will need to move back $406,465.47 from Capital Construction Line Item 001189480, General Fund, and $174,199.48 from 99918, sorry, these are tongue twisters, 9480 from the EMS Capital Construction Fund. Then it needs to be moved back to the Capital Construction Line Item 001189480 and 999189480 in FY23. The reason for returning this amount to FY23 is there was an invoice setting in the queue that was missed. So the November 7th, 2023 capital construction carryover amount was incorrect. That was a tongue twister. Sorry.
I see that this was reviewed by legal, was it?
Reviewed by legal and auditing.
And auditing.
Yes.
My big question. Thank you.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I move that the county approve Resolution 2023-96 to move $406,465.47 from FY24, 00118/9480, and $174,199.48 from FY24, 99918/9480 to FY23, 00118/9480 and 99918/9480 to correct the capital construction budget amount.
I will step down from the chair to second the motion. Public comment. Mr. Bowman.
Dave Bowman. Is that going to result in a hole that needs to get filled in the 2024 FY budget for this project?
Well, pardon me?
Well, you're shifting money out of 24, or, or, sorry, 2024 into 2023 to pay an invoice that was overlooked, right? Did I understand that correctly?
The invoice was in the queue, so it kind of disappears.
You said, well, that's when I say overlooked, that's what that means. Is that going to then leave a hole in the 2024 budget for this project that's going to get, have to get filled from other funds somehow? All right. Thank you.
So if I'm to understand this, the project had a budget. Now whether it's in fiscal year '23 or fiscal year '24, and in some cases, projects, especially ones that are multiple million dollars, span multiple fiscal years. But the number and the budgetary amount to build that building doesn't change regardless.
No. And we have detailed records of all the expenditures, everything that's being done. So.
And the proof is outside?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further comment in regards to this agendized item?
None.
I was referencing the public, Mr. Bradshaw. We're next.
Well, I have none.
Okay. Well, thank you. Hearing none. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
Area work.
Too late. You already said something. Roll call vote. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir Pete?
Mr. Pete, how are we doing?
I'll wait for you, sir.
All the civility. It's overwhelming.
Morning Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. Pete Hughes, Rec. Director for the record. I have two items for consideration this morning. And the first is regarding Gold Hill Parking Partial Reimbursement. Bit of a tongue twister. Attached is a request to the United States Forest Service for partial reimbursement of grant number 21 DG11010400018. Excavation, grade work, and paving were successfully completed and invoices were paid totaling $25,501.20. By signing this request, Bonner County Recreation will be reimbursed funds in the above amount. So I have to give you a little bit of history for the record on this. As this was brought before the board last year, the, the work was completed last summer and I applied for, for final reimbursement and close out in one application. Between the time the request was received and it was processed, the Forest Service had made some changes and there were some additional requirements. And also there was an adjustment to our in-kind contribution. Everything needed to be separated into three separate project reporting periods, which I have before you today. The first is a reimbursement and the second basically report on the county's in-kind match. And you'll see that in the, in the second item. So I'll turn the first one over to the board.
Right. Based on the information before us, I move that the county sign the request for partial reimbursement of grant number 21-DG-11010400-018 in the amount of $25,501.20.
I step down from the chair to second the motion. Is there any public discussion on this agendized item? Hearing none. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
No, sir.
Roll call vote? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion carries. Director?
Okay, thank you. So recreation item number two is in regards to Gold Hill Parking Final Closeout. Attached is a request to the United States Forest Service for final closeout of Grant 21 DG11010400018. Bonner County has fulfilled the obligations associated with the Gold Hill Park, Parking Lot Grant. The attached packet shows the monitoring periods and financial records, plural, in which recreation satisfied and exceeded the in-kind match of $4,000 for a total amount of $4,204.35. By signing this request, Bonner County Recreation will close out the above mentioned grant.
Based on the information before us, I move that the county sign the request for final closeout of grant number
I step down from the chair and second the motion. Is there any public comment besides Mr. Patterson?
It is Mr. Patterson.
Yes, no, absolutely.
Doug Patterson for the record. How many parking places are in this parking lot?
Parking spaces specifically? It's not divided up into spaces. What, what we did was we used a portion of the county right away and we paved about a 12-foot wide section. Overall, there's about a
Overall, there's about 150 feet in, in length. So widthwise, it's, it's, you know, adequate for personal vehicles and it, it just, it's sufficient for as many vehicles can fit in there, basically.
150 feet and it's a single road that would be parking there or both sides or?
So it's actually split into two sections. There's a shorter section and a longer section. In between the two is the access to the Gold Hill Trailhead parking lot, which is a Forest Service parking lot. And what we've done is we extended those out along the roadway to, it was for safety reasons because we get a ton of people that park in there. So this, they were parking in the ditch and anywhere else they could, so.
Okay. And, and could you?
Sometimes in the lane.
Could you state for me one more time the total cost on this?
Total cost of what we contracted out, there were two invoices that totaled $25,501.20. That was for the excavation, grade work, and paving. And then county match, what we put into the project as far as erosion control, striping, painting of the, of the parking spaces, signage, and what we were required to, we were required to monitor the site. We did traffic counts, et cetera, $4,204.35.
Okay, thank you, I think.
Kevin Moore for the record. Yeah, again, I think also, because I didn't quite understand it. The first line, it says requesting $25,000. So to me, it sound, that made me think maybe the total bill for the project that you were doing was maybe $50,000 and we were getting $25,000 back.
Mr. Moore, hold on, which one are you on? We are on?
They're both connected, Gold Hill.
They may be both be connected, but to bring us back to the agenda, we are currently talking about the part, yes, they are connected, but I want to be, final closeout of grant
So did we, county spend $29,700 for this project? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, and $25,000 of that is reimbursable.
Reimbursable from the state, federal?
The Forest Service.
Forest Service? So that's still pending, coming?
Yep. That, that was the first item and, and that's our request to get reimbursed for that.
Requesting it, okay.
Commissioner Kramer for the record. So maybe if you just clear this up for me. You were asked, how many parking spaces are there? And you said, well, there's no really defined parking spaces. But then you said that you paid to have the parking spaces striped, so.
Widthwise. So, I wish I had a picture to better explain, like.
What I'd like to do, because I would like to have, we, we're going to come back, I will put it in the agenda, because what we are here today to do, and thank you, Director, and I'm going to bring us back to the, we're talking about reimbursement. We aren't talking about the parking spaces. We aren't talking, that is not the agendized motion.
I know, I'm just, I'm talking about what he said.
And thank Mr. Kramer. Thank you. Director? Thank you. Is there any further public discussion in regards to the county signing the request for final closeout of grant number 21-DG11010400-018? Is there any discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote? Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. And would you get us some pictures that we can show to the public next week?
Sure, if, if you'd like, I can clear up the parking space numbers or do that later.
Let's do that next week. Thank you, Director.
Appreciate it.
All right. And our next agendized item is the discussion decision regarding the ICCO and the Hayden Ross letter. Oh, boy. So this is from me. So, the ICCO, well, what is the ICCO and how is this going to come into auditing? Well, this is something that personally I have inherited because I was not on the board in 2022. So I'm looking at a article and this was published in December. So we're going to go back to May 17th of 2022. Commissioners, yesterday, the individual county constitutional officers unanimously created an audit committee to help ensure Bonner County is enabled to spend ARPA money if the B OCC so chooses. At this time, it is our understanding that Bonner County needs to adopt and implement an internal control system substantially similar to the COSO framework, internal control program identified in 2 CFR 20303 prior to spending any ARPA money. By the way, all of these documents I will be providing to the clerk. So if anybody would like to see all of these documents, you can email the clerk and you will be able to see all of them. So, and then it goes through, please see the attached 303 Audit Committee Charter and please consider having the B OCC sign it. Although the B OCC isn't a necessary signatory to this charter, the, the Bonner ICCOs would appreciate the B OCC joining this project with us. Sign, Sheriff Darryl Wheeler. Now, as I hope becomes consistent in my actions as the board chair, I'm going to go right back to statute. The Audit of County Finances, 31-1701. The Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transaction of the county. Such audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners as required in Section 67-450B Idaho Code. I'll repeat the, the important parts to me, which is, under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners, Idaho Code. Then we have Title 31, Chapter 8, Counties and County Law, Powers and Duties of the Board of Commissioners, 31-809, the Audit of County Funds. And powers and duties of the Board of County Commissioners. It is not the powers and duties of the sheriff, it is not the powers and duties of the clerk. It is not the powers and duties of the assessor, it is not the powers and duties of the coroner. It is not the powers and duties of anybody other than the Board of County Commissioners according to state law. Audit of County Funds, to examine and audit the accounts of all officers having the care, management, collection of disbursement of monies belonging to the county or appropriated by law or otherwise for its use and benefit. And then, what monies do we have to look at? Well, Title 57, Public Monies are all monies coming into the hands of any treasurer of a depositing unit. That becomes very important because there are different treasurers. Bonner County has a treasurer and the fair board also has a treasurer, and they are two distinct bodies. And the treasurer, who is an elected official of the county, Larissa Coster, is the treasurer of Bonner County. Under Idaho Code 22-204, a fair board is authorized to appoint another treasurer. So they are two distinct treasurers, but with very similar responsibilities, which is the maintenance and care of public monies. So then, and I'm not going to go through all these documents because ultimately what I'm trying to get to people is to get to fiscal year 2023, the audit of county funds and the role and responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners. But I will provide all of these documents and you'll have the opportunity to ask questions. The 303 Audit Committee Charter and Subcommittee Appointing Document, which will be uploaded online after this. Whereas the Uniform Guidance UG codified a 2 CFR Part 200, and it goes on and on. And finally, now therefore, the undersigned elected officials, under the authority of the Idaho Constitution as construed by allied bail bonds. Allied bail bonds is a court case which is repeatedly mentioned throughout all of these documents. And under the requirements of Section 303, do hereby appoint the 303 Internal Control Development Subcommittee to develop and evaluate the status of a proposed 303 compliant program benchmarked to the framework. The ICDS shall develop and produce a draft 303 plan and evaluation statement as to any level of 303 deficiency Bonner currently has. The auditor as chief budget officer shall not consider federal assistance 303 compliant for budget purposes unless the ICDS or the 303 Audit Committee first deems that Bonner has an effective system of internal control as defined by framework or similar standard. The ICDS will be composed of one elected official and two non-employed individuals. Darryl Wheeler, Bonner County Sheriff, shall chair the ICDS and appoint the two other members. An interesting document, as I go back to state law, and you'll notice that I'm going to repeat statute repeatedly. The Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county. Such audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners as required in 67-450B Idaho Code. Then in November of last year, November 7th, 2022, yes, this document will also be included in the packet. And it was a special meeting minutes, elected officials. Commissioner McDonald called the meeting order at 11:00 AM. Nancy Twine presented a PowerPoint, see attached for description. And there was a brief description regarding the framework and federal money, what qualifies and what doesn't comply. Commissioner Connolly made a motion to adopt Green Book as the county framework. Mr. Bradshaw seconded the motion, all in favor, the motion passed. Mr. Bradshaw made a motion to appoint all nine elected officials to the Oversight Committee. Mr. Connolly seconded the motion. Well, then we have to get into, what is Green Book? And so today, as I was looking for it, this will also be included in the packet, what is Green Book? Well, this is from thefiscaltreasury.gov. So this is from the United States Treasury. The Green Book is a comprehensive guide for financial institutions that receive ACH payments from and send payments to the federal government. Most payments are made through ACH with very few exceptions. Federal government ACH transactions, and it's, so it's a guide. Here's the first part in the table of comments. Welcome to the Green Book, a comprehensive guide for financial institutions that receive ACH payments from the federal government, which was how the county becomes involved in this. We do receive money from the federal government, which we use for such things as paying for that parking lot. Of the $29,000, $25,000 is being reimbursed, which for the county taxpayer, that's a heck of a deal. We put 29 in and we get 25,000 back. But I will repeat, a comprehensive guide for financial institutions that receive ACH payments from the federal government. So there's Green Book. Now I'm going to go right back to counties and counties law because the federal government does not create counties. The Idaho Constitution creates counties. That is the way it works in a federal republic. So going back to state law, this is state law, the Audit of County Finances. The Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county. Such audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners as required in Section 67-450B Idaho Code. It's Idaho Code. Then here is the Internal Control Oversight Board Charter Agreement. And if you go through all these documents like I have, because there is a mountain of documents that has been created, you will notice a recurring theme in production from our prosecutor's office. And that theme is allied bail bonds versus Kootenay County. Oh, there it is. Allied bail bonds versus Kootenay County and Green Book. Bonner County Internal Control Oversight Board Charter Agreement, which I will put in there and I'm not going to go through the time. But this was the ICOB. The ICOB, the Internal Control Oversight Board, never got off the ground for a variety of reasons, which I am not going to adjudicate at this time, but I will include this. Here is from July 31st, and I sent this to Seth Grigg. Seth Grigg is the Executive Director of the Idaho Association of Counties. The Idaho Association of Counties is a quasi-governmental organization that is designed and developing policy for counties in Idaho. Hey Luke, the ICOB sounds like something that was set up by Bonner County as there is no statutory requirement for such a board. There are no issues having such a board, but there should be some documentation that provides for the purpose oversight and authority of the board. Generally speaking, Idaho law vests the authority to audit and oversee county funds with the B OCC, who is required to oversee an annual audit of outside, an out, annual outside audit of county funds. The county clerk also performs internal audit functions and serves as the county's chief budget officer. The Board of County Commissioners, in a properly agendized and duly noticed meeting, chose to collapse the Internal Control Oversight Board because it never got off the ground and was not functional. Here is more correspondence, which I will include. I'm writing with you as the Internal Control Oversight Boards to urge you not to replace the Internal Control Oversight Board with a weakened audit committee as proposed this Thursday on Monday afternoon. The B OCC scheduled a special meeting to change things up this coming Thursday morning. Eliminate or weaken the ICOB. I know that the B OCC created the ICOB in November 2022 and that the ICOB has been entirely inactive without a chairman or any legitimately scheduled meetings. More correspondence from Sheriff Darryl Wheeler. After this correspondence, I emailed the sheriff and I asked, could you please explain to me what, where is the authority from regarding the legitimacy of the ICCO? Because I seek to understand things based upon statute, ordinance, policy. And it flows from the federal to the state to the county. That is how it works, but there in our republic, we are a republic. The federal government does not control the state government in regards to how we do some of these functions. So this is from Attorney Scott Bauer on behalf of Sheriff Darryl Wheeler in his capacity as an ICCO member, November 24th, 2023. So apparently, the ICCO is still a functional unit in Bonner County, according to Attorney Scott Bauer and Sheriff Darryl Wheeler. And it goes through, on approximately November 23rd, it goes through this stuff. And I'm, I'm listening and I'm trying to understand, going back to state law, which I'll repeat again, the Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county. Such audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners. Because somehow the ICCO came up with this idea that they had authority to create an audit committee. So I emailed Sheriff Wheeler and asked, could you please explain where this authority comes from? Two chairmen of the B OCC, Luke Omet from Sheriff Darryl Wheeler. By the way, I will include this in the packet so that all members of the public are able to follow along through this long convoluted exercise of overreach. This memorandum serves as a response to your email dated November 27th, 2023, in which you sought clarification from Darryl Wheeler concerning the legal standing and legitimacy of the Idaho County Constitutional Officers. Your inquiry specifically references the absence of many mention in the ICCO and the Idaho Constitution. Idaho 31-2202, the United States Constitution or Bonner County ordinance. Additionally, you cited a recent memo from Lewis Marshall Prosecuting Attorney addressing the responsibilities of the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to Idaho Code 31-1701. It's the one I've been quoting to you from. And sought clarification on how the role and activities of the ICCO align with this statutory framework. In addressing your concerns, this memo aims to provide a basic argument supporting the legitimacy of the ICCO by elucidating how the existence and operations of this body serve the interests of the taxpayer and comply with relevant Idaho statutes. So then it references Idaho Code 31-802. Idaho Code 31-809. These are statutes that oddly enough are the responsibility of the Board of County Commissioners. I greatly appreciate Sheriff Darryl Wheeler bringing to my attention the role and duties of my office, but I will. of my office, but I will also tell you that I believe that it is the board who is responsible to execute statute in regards to the Board of County Commissioners." So, and there is more stuff in here that goes through, which will be released to the public so that they can see and understand that perspective. But I will go back to 31-1701, "The Audit of County Finances. The Board of County Commissioners of every county shall cause to be made annually a full and complete audit of the financial transactions of the county. Such audit shall be made by and under the direction of the Board of County Commissioners as required in Section 67-450B Idaho Code." So that gets us to our exhibits and the challenges. Last night, I attended the Fair Board meeting, and I have asked them to retract their statements that have been issued, and there's too many statements for me to be able to go through because it, dealing with the ICCO and then dealing with the fair, has been time consuming. And the amount of paper that has been generated, to get right back to Idaho Code, who is responsible for what, I think it's real simple. Idaho Code says the commissioners are responsible for the audit. Idaho Code also says that bodies that have separate treasures are responsible to maintain those accounts. I want to be very clear, I have asked the Fair Board to retract the statements, which I believe are grossly inaccurate, which is supported by fact. Now, according to 31-1701, the Board of County Commissioners is responsible to hire an independent auditing firm, and that firm has to meet certain standards. There is a process that we go through in accordance with law, and there are different processes for different tasks that are assigned to the Board of County Commissioners. In regards to auditing, as we're talking about today's meeting, a million here, a million there, oh, all of a sudden we get to a $75 million budget, we're talking some real money. You cannot just go out and start cold calling auditors to hire them. That is not how it works. There is specific federal guidelines that must be met in order for us to be in compliance with the law, period. I cannot go hire my cousin to do the audit, nor should I. I don't think I have any cousins that are auditors, but I have a lot of cousins. So Bonner County has engaged Hayden Ross, which is an independent auditing firm that has been in business in Idaho for 85 years to conduct our audits. And the first step in that is to do a response for proposal. This has to be done in accordance with the law. That is then followed by an RFQ that has to demonstrate also in accordance with law that the people that we are trying to audit, the monies that we are entrusted with are appropriate. So I'm not hiring my cousin, who knows how to drink a beer by a bonfire, but doesn't have a clue as to how to audit a $75 million corporation, because I have to go and I have to ask the taxpayer, give me money so I can provide the statutorily obligated services. That is not how it works, that's not how it operates. There is a very detailed process. Three weeks ago, I brought forth a memorandum asking, at the request of our independent auditor, to correct a statement of the Bonner County Sheriff's Office. I have been in contact with our auditor, Tony Mattson, and he said that the statement that had been released by Clerk Rosedale met his initial response. I will have included in this packet today, the letter that has been drafted, of which I am about to get to the motion for. But the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, and I'll read it, so it's on the record. "B O C C has engaged Hayden Ross for fiscal years 2013 through fiscal year 2022 as the county's independent auditor in accordance with Idaho Code 31-1701 and 67-450B. Hayden Ross has performed the independent audits of Bonner County in accordance with generally accepted governmental auditing standards as defined by the United States General Accountability Office. The B O C C and Hayden Ross have executed a confirmation of understanding agreement for each fiscal year that articulated the scope of contracted services. Recently, questions have been raised about the scope of these contracted services, and the following statements reflects the position of the Board of County Commissioners. One, Bonner County had no expectation that the independent audits contracted with Hayden Ross included the Bonner County Fairgrounds operations for fiscal year 2022 or previous years. Bonner County's audited financial statements have historically excluded the Bonner County Fairgrounds operations even prior to engaging Hayden Ross. Number two, Bonner County is not and will not be pursuing a reissuance for previous years audited financial statements to include the operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds contracted with Hayden Ross. Number three, the fiscal year 2023 Bonner County audited financial statement will include the Bonner County Fairgrounds operation as a component unit, blended or discreet, to be determined. However, the Bonner County Fairgrounds operations audit will be conducted by a different independent auditor than that of Bonner County. Questions regarding this correspondence can be sent to Luke Ommitt at bonnercountyid.gov, Chairman, Bonner County Board of Commissioners." Now, no board can bind a future board's actions, so a future board could choose to attempt to pursue these audits. However, the Fair Board has made clear that their records do not exist at this time for an audit to be conducted. It is my understanding that an audit of the Fairgrounds costs the taxpayer approximately $20,000 to $25,000 in addition to the $50,000 to $100,000 that an audit costs for the Bonner County at large. So for us to go back, the 10 years that was asked would cost approximately $200,000 to $250,000 to make a determination of what I do not know, but it is challenging. But $250,000, looking backwards, is a money that this commissioner at this time is not prepared to spend with this information that we have before us. So here's my memorandum, and I will step down from the chair. "I move, based on the information before us, for the B O C C to approve the draft letter to Hayden Ross reflecting, one, the fiscal year 2022 and previous audited financial statements did not include operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds. Two, Bonner County is not pursuing a reissuance of previous years audited financial statements to include operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds. Three, the fiscal year 2023 audited financial statement will include operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds as a component unit of Bonner County. Or, the Bonner County and operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds audited financial statement will be conducted by different independent auditors, and allow for the chairman to sign for the B O C C." Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There is a motion and a second. Public comment on the matter before us. Mr. Patterson.
Doug Patterson, for the record. This Hayden Ross letter, was that linked on the, on your notice?
No. I will put it, I will have it in this packet.
In the package and all that stuff is really great. I simply don't think that this was adequately noticed in your agenda to be acted on in this meeting. I think you need to wait till next week, now that people know what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Bowman.
Dave Bowman, could you repeat the last, the last part that you said about in your memorandum, or the motion? You said auditor will be independent of, I don't remember the language.
Oh, yeah. So the fourth one, so there's going, the Bonner County and operations, so there's operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds, audited financial statements will be conducted by different independent audit.
Okay, by then, by different, do you mean other than Hayden and Ross?
No, so not necessarily. I mean, I don't know, so.
What is it? Well, different from what?
Ask your questions and then the chair will.
I just asked you.
I'm not going to, Mr. Bowman, I'm not going to.
I'm not going to debate either, and I'm not here to debate. Am I asking a question and you're not answering it? The question is independent from what or from whom?
Bonner County, we are going to hold a meeting this week, which is actually scheduled for tomorrow, in regards to the RFP process. We, Bonner County, has to submit an RFP for an independent audit. We have not chosen who that auditor is because we haven't submitted the RFP, because that's what we need to do. So, and then we're going to also submit two RFPs, Mr. Bowman, I'm answering the question that you asked. There will be one for Bonner County, and there will be an RFP also for the operations of the Bonner County Fairgrounds. And that will be included, I'm looking at Clerk Rosedale, because I'm trying not to muddle this, because I am not the auditor, all I'm, they will come together and they will make a complete audit, whether it is discreet or blended.
I think what Mr. Bowman asked me, the answer is, whichever auditor audits the county will be different than the audits of the Fairgrounds, just that we use two separate auditors, one for one, and another one for the other. It won't be the same for me.
Okay. Well, certainly Hayden and Ross should not be the ones auditing the Fair Board, and if I'm an auditor and you want me not to look back before 2023, that's where I'm going to look, because there's something hinky that's gone on before, and you guys will fight to the death to keep it from going back to look at, see whatever it was prior to 2023, and that's where the auditor needs to be looking.
So I am to understand that you want us to spend $200,000.
Susan Bowman, for the record, where are you getting this 200 and something thousand dollars? Did you get a quote from an actual agency that said this is how much it would cost? Or are you just adding that up on your own, or where are you getting that from?
When you are done with your comments, I will respond, Mrs. Bowman, I will not be engaging in a dialogue with you.
Okay, so you're not going to answer my question?
No, I am.
That's fine. Okay, then the other thing that I would say is you have repeatedly said that it is the B O C C's responsibility to do these audits. Is there any state statute, or did you look into any state statute when that doesn't happen? What is the repercussion of that? So those are my two questions.
I'd like to make one.
Oh.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
To help some of the confusion that has been out there and nobody's actually addressed, unless you're renting, you get a tax statement every year, twice a year from our Treasury. Some of the things on there will be things that you love, like Andre School District or West Bonner County School District, your fire districts, your ambulance districts, those things will all be on your tax bill. County tax bill will make up 40 something percent of your bill. All those other things are separate taxing entities. While we collect the money and pass it through to them, we have no authority or obligation to see what they do with their money, audit it in any shape, form, or fashion, they are a separate taxing district, and Bonner County has no authority over them whatsoever. If you look at your tax bill, you'll come across a deal that says, "Honour County Fairgrounds." Very small amount, but that covers the Bonner County employees that work for the Fairgrounds, not the Fair Board, correct Mike?
The Bonner County employee salaries and that.
Right, and that's the only thing we have authority to track and audit. The Fair Board does multiple events every year, rodeo, demolition derby, all kinds of things. They collect money, they spend the money. It is not our authority to track that. We have no authority over what they do with that. We have no authority that they never kept records. That would be up to the prosecutor's office as to what they do with their money. We have no authority over it. It's a separate entity from the county. Even though it operates under the county, we do not have any authority over that. So we can only go so far, after that, it's a law violation thing that does not, we're not allowed to prosecute anybody, we're not allowed to arrest anybody, or interfere with anybody's operations. That would fall under the prosecutor's office. So if that helps you understand what we can actually do about the records that they say don't exist, we have no authority over whatsoever. We can't go and demand that you provide us records for the past 10 years. We don't have that authority. Now, if legislation changes, it probably won't be retroactive anyway, but that's where our authority ends. If that helps.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Cootney County is currently engaged with IED Bailey to audit their fair, and it is my understanding that it is approximately $20,000 so, by, for the Cootney County Fair. So I extrapolated because of that information, if it's $20,000 to do that fair, it would be approximately $20,000 to do our fair. So yes, Mrs. Bowman, my information is based upon current audits that are taking place by IED Bailey, who I will be submitting an RFP to, and hopefully they will send a response back so that we can audit. But I will also, it is my intention that when we submit the RFP and we make the letter of engagement, I am going to rely on the expertise of the auditors to guide us in what we are going to independently audit. But it is my basic understanding of finances that it is very difficult to conduct an audit when records do not exist.
You're extrapolating from Cootney County Fair, right?
Mrs. Bowman, thank you. I have responded to your question. Mr. Kramer.
Rick Kramer, for the record. So I just want to say that I think that you should probably recognize that when it comes to integrity and governance, you've lost the trust of the people of Bonner County.
Mr. Kramer, I appreciate your comment in regards to my integrity, but that has nothing to do with this particular agendized item.
Doug Patterson, for the record, one more time. The State Attorney General used to come around and give lectures on state open meeting laws and their requirements that I've taken twice.
Mr. Patterson, that has nothing to do with this particular item. So we are not discussing that at this time. Now, in our next agendized item, which after this will be public comment, you can bring that, and Mr. Patterson, you have already spoke.
Inadequate notification.
That is, that is a perspective. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Borisov.
Mr. Borisov, for the record. I have a question. It's been stated here multiple times that the B O C C is responsible for the audit, and then Commissioner Bretcher stated that they have no, really, they have no right to tell any board how to audit themselves or what to do, and yet, all boards in the county are elected except the Fair Board. Fair Board is appointed by the commissioners. So how would you reconcile that?
Let's let, wait till he's seated, Mr. We aren't, we aren't going to engage. So, and I'd like to go first on this. First off, all boards in the county are not elected. For example, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not elected, they are appointed, but the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Bowman, this is not the public comment section, you will have an opportunity to respond when it is, I'm sure you will. But there are different boards, for example, there is the Waterways Board, they are not elected, they are appointed. Now, the advice of council, which is interesting, because council has given multiple advice, the council to the Board of County Commissioners counseled the board and the clerk that the Fair Board was a completely separate unit. And one of the things that is important when we talk about statute, ordinance, and policy is to have counsel present so that they can advise us. Let's, Mr. Bradshaw, are you a lawyer?
Not aware that they haven't counseled us.
So we have no attorney present today to give us this counsel. The counsel that was present to prior boards never brought forward until this summer of this fiscal year that magically, we were responsible for this. Bonner County has never audited the Fairgrounds in this manner, and I will go back to Idaho statute for those people. You will notice a theme, hopefully, in what I refer to, and I am not a lawyer, I am not playing one up here. Public monies are all monies coming into the hands of any treasurer of a depositing unit, of which there are two distinct treasurers. And the Fair Board is a unique creation because Idaho Code 22-204 creates them. And I have spoken with a number of different commissioners across the counties. I will start flying down for the Idaho Association of Counties, actually, I'll get to that in my report, and I've asked them, and you know how many different ways counties operate their fair? Forty-four. One for each of the different counties, because we. Forty-four, one for each of the different counties because we are distinct. And it's a challenge, but each of the different counties has something to celebrate and each of us sometimes has our own unique challenges. But I think Idaho Code 57 dash 105, public monies makes it pretty clear, coming into the hands of any treasurer. Well, Bonner County has been responsible and has definitely stewarded the funds appropriately that have come into the hands of the treasurer of Bonner County. I will not speak for the treasurer of the Fair Board, other than to notice that they didn't have one until August of this year. And that was the responsibility of the Fair Board. Ms. Kramer? And then I'm going to cut off public. Oh, there is, yep.
Jennifer Kramer, for the record. Just for the record, I disagree with, with not looking at previous years to understand what went wrong because we need to ensure that there's some controls put in place to prevent future issues. But I guess my main, and then another main point I want to make is I'm hearing contradictory statements because, Mr. Bradshaw, you just stated that the prosecutor's office, you don't have any authority over the Fair Board. It's a, it's a, are they following the laws?
In the way they keep their records. We have no authority over that. We can't tell you how to track your money if you're a taxing district.
Right, but then you referred to.
We can suggest it, we can't tell you.
You referred to the prosecutor's office as being responsible for the Fair Board doing things according to how they should, which to me Sheriff Wheeler is a law and law enforcement. You said it's a law enforcement. Well, that's exactly what Sheriff Wheeler is, is law enforcement. And so for him to try to make sure that the Fair Board is being handled according to the law and for you to kick him out of that process just seems a little not kosher. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer.
Christina Nicholas Anderson, for the record. Just a point of correction. I learned last night at the Fair Board that the county also pays their water and sewer. So just that. And I would like to say that I think the county cannot afford not to go back and audit prior to 2023. They may not say that they have the records, but we know that we have bank statements. We know now that there's a Google Drive that has several years of the bank reconciliations on it. We know that there's boxes of Darcy's old records sitting in her office. So we know that there's information out there. I've posted several online and I have several more that I can provide. So if they're not providing it, we do have access to some of that. And Cooney County may have been 20,000 a week or for a year. Our fair is much smaller. So I think it is good stewardship for you to get a bid from Idae Bailey, which I would highly recommend. So I think it's premature to say we can't afford them. And I think, I just think that all of us in this room, no matter who our preferred commissioner is, are, most of us anyways, are in agreement that things can't really heal and move forward until we rectify what has or hasn't happened in the past. And I don't think 2023 is that starting point. There's too much that's gone on. And I mean, look at how our community isn't one. Every week we've come in here and we leave in sour places. And I, I have to believe that our heart and soul, we really do want to love our neighbors. And, and I think this is a place to make it happen. So I just want to really plead with you both and with Commissioner Williams, if she's listening or watching on YouTube, that we join on this. So that's what I'd like to ask. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. To move forward with, with the business meeting I had, so that I was going to cut off public comment. So there is a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
No.
We'll call vote. And I have, it is. We'll call vote. Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries. Our next agendized item is public comment. And I will do, we will conduct public comment in the following fashion. We will go with the people that are present in the room first, followed by the, followed by the people that are online. And then I will give any elected officials an opportunity, if they have any comments they would like to make, even though they're public but not public. All right, Ms. Amy Lunsford.
Amy Lunsford, for the record. I've been coming to these meetings for months, asking about the investigation on the Fair Board embezzlement and the inadequate reports made by Louis Marshall, which were then circulated as facts by Sheriff Daryl Wheeler. And now we are told there are no records. I can understand the Board of Commissioners' stance on the Fair Board's statement, no records. And it would be a waste of taxpayers' dollars to add, audit something that is not there. Apparently, running the fairgrounds on bank statements alone have worked for many years for many different boards. I am glad that everyone on the Fair Board and the county are moving together to work together in a positive way. But still, that doesn't excuse the fact that several county employees and some volunteer whistleblowers accuse Ms. Smith and possibly bullied her until her passing. Considering all the new information, I believe that the prosecuting attorney office and the sheriff need to issue an apology as big and bold as the accusations they made against her. Several of these employees that were supposed to be helping Ms. Smith were part of the I C C O group. Was her issues discussed in these I C C O meetings? I believe the I C C O groups originally started as an ARPA spending fund committee, morphed into a gossip group of personal county business. How will we ever know where is the I C C O members accountable to open meeting laws that I hear so much about? I am asking today that the elected officials that may have been privileged to the I C C O and are willing to come forward and shed light on this corruption. And if they're not willing to do this, I suggest to the public that these elected officials not be reelected. And to their subordinates of these elected officials that took part in the I C C O meetings, I ask that you please come forward with any information on the corruption that happened at the hands of the I C C O. Because as I see it, all this shaming of Mrs. Smith was over a belt buckle and new boots. Or was this a smear campaign cooked up by someone who wanted Darcy gone and then was supported by Marshall and Wheeler? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Lunsford. Ms. Jennifer Kramer.
Jennifer Kramer, for the record. Just two things. One, the RFP meetings for the audits, you said were occurring this week, and I request that Asia Williams be part of those meetings. And then my, my other comment earlier in the meeting, Luke, you mentioned you had a discussion that the board should follow the same procedure as the staff in submitting packets and memos, et cetera, for their agenda items. And so you didn't vote on it, you just both agreed that you should do that. And so I'm, I'm confused if, if that is the process that you intend to follow going forward. You clearly didn't do it with this whole Hayden Ross thing. So I'd like to understand what that exactly meant or what the outcome of that exactly is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kramer. I will respond to that. There are certain functions of the Board of County Commissioners that do not all require an action item vote. I read to you at the beginning of the meeting, Idaho Code 74 dash 204. Yes, another retread of me stating Idaho Code. There is no clear line about how the board conducts their agenda process. It says there will be an agenda. And for certain administrative or ministerial functions, especially ones that do not involve the expenditure of public funds, it is up to the Board of County Commissioners to determine what their internal processes will be. Mr. Rick Kramer.
Rick Kramer, for the record. So I'd like to have you put it on the agenda. You're using the Robert's Rules of Order, but the way you framed it is that you're just going to use the framework. So you'll pick and choose what you're going to use out of Robert's Rules of Order and not use it as, as a whole. So we as a community, we're not sure what rules you're going to pick and choose from. And I don't know if that's legal. Maybe, maybe there needs to be a legal opinion on.
Let's ask the lawyer in the room.
What's that?
Oh, there isn't one.
Well, I wasn't, I was asking for a legal opinion, not yours. I was asking you to put it on the agenda. The other thing I'd like to ask is you were asked to get legal opinion on posting public records requests online so people could all look at them. And when you didn't follow through last week, it came up again. I'd like to ask you if you submitted that to legal and if you got a response.
Mr. Kramer, I'm not going to engage in a dialogue with you, but after you're done, I will give you a partial response. There will be information forthcoming. There's your response. Our next agenda, our next speaker is Ms. Christina Nicholas Anderson.
Hello again, Christina Nicholas Anderson, for the record. There's been an increased interest in Fair Board meetings in recent months. Last night, there were over 30 people present. Myself and others have requested Zoom on at least three occasions without any acknowledgement or action. I'd like to request this board contribute to that discussion and/or offer the necessary resources so that the Fair Board can facilitate Zoom process, which would enable greater access for all members of our fair community. Thank you for listening to my comments.
I will reach out to the Fair Board and see about that, Ms. Anderson. Is that primarily Zoom? Just Zoom you're seeking? Like an owl?
We can't tell them that they need to do that. We can just say that people think it would be a good ideal.
I agree.
We have no authority over how they run their meeting.
I will say that Idaho Code establishes that the Fair Board meetings are supposed, it establishes where they are. So they're, that's why they do it. Our next speaker is Ms. Maureen Patterson, Mrs.
I already spoke.
Oh. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. Mrs. Bowman.
Susan Bowman, for the record. So last week, you offered an apology to Jonna Plant, Luke, you did, who you called Ms. Crawford. So you got her name wrong. But what you offered as an apology was that you, quote, muddled the Pledge of Allegiance. And so I'm here today to tell you, everyone here, the whole truth of actually what did happen, which was back during your campaign, you wrote out the Pledge of Allegiance perfectly with the commas. Everything was written 100% perfectly, except for that you left out two words, "under God." So that's the actual truth of what happened. Jonna called you out for it, and then you responded to Jonna by saying, "How dare you question my faith?" Then fast forward to the Republican Central Committee Censure meeting, where I stood up and again called you out for taking out the words "under God" from our Pledge of Allegiance. The next day, you went on, back onto Facebook to say, "Yeah, I messed up, I have no excuses." And then you made an excuse, which was that you, quote, "fat fingered it. This is all in writing and I can provide it to anyone that wants it." So people can make of that what they will. I personally believe that "under God" should never be taken out of the Pledge of Allegiance. And I have experienced that in one other place, that's in the communist state of Washington, where socialists often purposefully take out "under God" out of the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, why do they do that? Because it makes it so much easier to control people when they don't know that their rights come from God. So the Constitution doesn't give us our rights. God gives us our rights and the Constitution protects them. So I find it very odd that you have not answered yet why you've taken out those words, "under God," from the Pledge of Allegiance. But what I would say is that I'm, what we're watching here is tyranny in action. And I've experienced it already in the communist state of Washington, and here we are in Idaho experiencing it with you, Chairman Ahmet. And what you do is you regularly cut off people, you won't even listen to them on Zoom. You've cut people off on Zoom. You've actually cut their Zoom feed off. You play around, you know, your first, your first action, really, one of your first actions as Commissioner was to take Zoom away. Okay? So the First Amendment, by the way, I'm just going to read it to you to remind you that Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. There's more to it than that, but Congress shall make no law. That means you can't either abridging the freedom of speech. Okay? What you're doing is abridging our freedom of speech. And you can smirk all you want, but we all know it's true. Okay? And we're going to ask you to stop. And at some point, you are going to reap what you sow.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Welly, for the record. One of the Commissioners on this board is a history teacher, and he may recognize this comment from George Santalana. Those who forget the past are condemned to repeat it. Now, tagging on to that, I have here a portion of a comment made online by a person who happens to think very highly of that particular Commissioner. And she made this comment. He has made the difficult decision to come up against the corruption and lawlessness that has gripped our county offices. And then she goes on, this man is quite literally working to restore law and order in our county. Using your comment from last week's board meeting, that you're looking forward, you're not looking into the past. Failing to look into the past is going to prohibit you from going forward. It's going to be an anchor around your neck. And it's going to prevent healing in this county. There are people here in this row who are very invested in what happened to their friend. And nobody in this county is going to be satisfied until that is dealt with explicitly so they know the details around it. You can't do an audit wrong. A forensic auditor can go into the bank statements that were already brought up. They can make connections. They can end the problems that are going on here. And people have to understand it's going to go one way or the other. Something was wrong or something was not wrong. But when they have the evidence in front of them, they'll be more readily able to accept it. And then the community could go on and watch the Fair Board audit, watch this community grow, and it is going to grow. But until that happens, you're going to continue to have division and dissension. I'm going to call it at that because you already know that and you're avoiding it. And these people, all of us, don't appreciate that and don't deserve it.
Mr. Welly, I'm going to make a comment. You were in law enforcement for years.
Yes, I was.
And you may witness a crime, arrest somebody, take them in, press charges, present the evidence to the prosecutor, and then he turn and look at it. And I know you've been in that position and probably frustrate the heck out of you. Prosecutor goes, no, I don't see anything wrong. Where does your authority stop then? You can't go further with it. You're tied at that point.
Commissioner, you're wrong.
Well, you can go to the state.
No, let me answer you.
Yeah, you can't make prosecutor prosecute.
No, I can't make him prosecute, but I can if I No, I can't make him prosecute, but I can, if I believe there is evidence out there, go back and look for it. That's what a forensic accountant or a forensic auditor can do. We don't have that evidence. It's not here, but it hasn't been looked for either.
Bingo. And who has to do that looking for it? It falls under law enforcement, and it falls under the prosecutor. We do not have that authority.
In this case, it actually falls under the Fair Board to hire, to show what they've done. Or the Attorney General, or the U.S. Attorney General.
But you said Commissioners are in charge of the Fair Board.
No.
We can appoint them, remove them for cause. We cannot tell them, "This is the way you will keep your records. This is the way you will track your records." We don't have that authority. We can't go...
Commissioner Bradshaw.
We want you to make, all we can do is request. We can't make them do anything.
Commissioner Bradshaw, in the interest of getting back to public comment as we exercise our freedom of speech and our First Amendment, we have Mrs. Welly.
So I come to you again, this dying Welly, with a piece of the armor of God, the shield of faith. It covers our most vulnerable body part, our heart. This heavy shield can withstand the impact of fiery blows from the enemy. The arrows the shield protects us from are spiritual, but those spiritual arrows feel very real. Romans fired flaming arrows, but today, the arrows are often fired via snide comments in the workplace, emails, and social media. We need the spiritual protection that the shield provides us now more than ever. Those of us who do pray that God will arm us, and we will take the shield up all the while the enemy fires arrows of hate, doubt, and deceit. My God stated that He came to this world to testify to the truth, and I pray to do the same today. The board, this board and the public, has allowed hate and deceit to take over Bonner County. This is the most beautiful place to live, but right now is the most hateful place I can imagine. I believe that hate began right here in this building. I believe it did not begin with this board, but it has come to full fruition with this board. Commissioner Bradshaw, you, more than anyone, should be an example of understanding and kindness. You've demonstrated the opposite. You have demonstrated the anger on many occasions in front of people right here and people not in attendance. I'm asking that you set your hatred aside and make the change in your soul that you know you must. This county needs peace. An apology from you to the many people here that have seen your frightening temper would go far to healing this country, or the county, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ahmet, your rude behavior and condescending attitude toward individuals and the public and your fellow Commissioner is appalling. You don't have to like us, nor her, but genuine, not theatrical courtesy would go far in changing opinions of you. Today, you sit in the chairman's seat. Be the leader that the military trains soldiers to be. You are fully aware that a leader has certain qualities that make people want to follow them. Good leaders possess self-awareness, credibility, humility, and our role models. They build trust and understanding by encouraging others to seize initiative. They don't take over every role, knock others out of the way, and they don't end debate by storming out of the room. I am sure that the leaders you most admired gave you room to maneuver and succeed. Commissioner Williams isn't here, but she will hear this, I'm sure. While I have greatly admired your initiative and drive, and we all know I've become greatly distressed at what I believe to be growing physical danger for you, I believe you feed into Commissioner Ahmet and Bradshaw's anger.
Mrs. Welly, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Borisov, do you have comments to make today?
Yes.
Please step forward.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Who are you again?
Dimitri Borisov, for the record. A lot of people have already touched on those issues, but I believe they are important, and I will talk about them again. First of all, I remember when the Roberts Rules of Order were adopted, the resolution was passed to adopt Roberts Rules of Order. It was not passed to adopt them as a framework, if I remember correctly.
Rules of framework.
So, and that's kind of, even if, so I cannot see it, I'm sorry, from here, but this was, I remember from my memory. And to me, it seems to be very disingenuous when things like this are done because it means I can pick and choose which rules I can follow and I cannot follow. So I'd like to please fix this. And the other thing is, I hear a lot right now, especially coming from the chairman, about transparency and about open to the public, about how things are done, presenting a lot of documents and citing a lot of laws. However, and Commissioner, you're right, that Idaho State rules are pretty general and give a lot of leeway to the counties how they run businesses in the meetings. But it seems to me that, and based upon what I have seen, what is being done here is a bare minimum. If we allow 24 hours for special meeting, we're going to schedule within 24 hours and five minutes. So if we talk about transparency and actually, I believe that, talk about being open to the public, please don't do bare minimums. Be more open with the public and do more than just bare minimums are written in the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borisov. Mr. Bowman?
Dave Bowman, for the record. Regarding ICCO, just in response to Ms. Lunsford, the ICCO consists of elected officials that are each in charge of their own department. They are not subject to open meeting law. Open meeting law is when you have multiple, look it up.
They're all elected officials.
They are elected, each in charge of their own.
For the gallery, Mr. Bowman, please direct your comments to the chair.
All right, Chair, you should know this, and you could confirm it. You should know.
I can confirm you are wrong in your interpretation.
No, I'm absolutely not wrong. Look at, you should know this. I should be shocked that you don't, but frankly, I'm not. Wow. And an elected official in charge of his own department, or her own department, is not subject to the open meeting laws where they have to have a quorum and to meet with other people or to publicly agendize their meetings or notice them. Not the case. Really, you should look it up. Two weeks ago, I commented about the October 16th special meeting that you all called about, the EMS building across the street. Early in that meeting, Asia, or Commissioner Williams, commented several times that it was wrong to be spending taxpayer money without a plan. I went back and last week, or two weeks ago, I was told that I was wrong by Commissioner Ahmet and Clerk Rosedale about what I said. 2120, I went back to look at the auto, Commissioner, audio file, Commissioner Ahmet, "I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Williams." He says, "That's unusual." Teddy Lepton, at 21 and 30, "We need a plan. The whole plan is not there." At 25 and 40, and here's the gem, Commissioner Bradshaw, and I quote, this was when he was asked how we got here without a plan. "This was a concept," he said. Then it went on to engineering, and we had preliminaries. Now, we're looking at modifications before, and before you can have an exact plan, you have to talk about all these ideals over, which is why we're here. Then we can come up with a target plan and with all the numbers and go from there. So I was not wrong in saying that it was said at that meeting by several people, there was no plan. Regarding the workplace environment that you said today has nothing to do with HR under BOCC, it has, that is a preposterous statement. Bringing HR under the BOCC has been a huge contributor to a poor working environment for many employees in this building.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mrs. Fletcher.
Darla Fletcher, for the record. I just want to ask for an item for the agenda going in some future time. We've made some comments about the facilities and who should be looking at doing winterizing and general maintenance, and I would like for you to consider putting that under the Maintenance Department. I think they have somebody who leads them and could keep accurate records, and that seems to me the logical place because that's the point where they get their marching orders. So I'd appreciate it if you'd just take that under consideration, please.
That's where he's at at this time, so.
But then, I don't understand why there's, it's been brought up several times that nobody's looking at it.
I don't either.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Fletcher. Mr. Moore.
Kevin Moore, for the record. And so, as I mentioned last time, whatever, I think there can be some benefits, pros and cons, as per the public comments, being able to have a preliminary, be able to have initial to begin with, and then at the end, whatever. And so I'm going to ask you to put that on the agenda, to think about that, because some, I have seen some people leave, whatever, that they can't stick around for the whole meeting. So I think it would be beneficial that we could have public comment at the beginning, and then even at the end, because there's a lot of things that come up through the discussion or whatever that people can want to maybe more talk about. And as the one brother was saying here about having, instead of having a bare minimum, because that's what I'm trying to get to here, that we open it up so that there is more public comment, because hopefully you guys want public comment. I mean, I know it's not always easy to take, whatever. Hopefully, we're all trying to monitor ourselves better. But you guys should be wanting to hear any and all dialogue that people come here to want to be part of and to give you. So that's one thing I would like you to contemplate, whatever, as a beginning and an end, whatever. And yeah, because a big part of me saying about even having at the end, a beginning and end, luckily, several of my peer group here mentioned something that I thought nobody was going to bring up, or maybe I was the only one considering it. But I've heard several people say here about your Roberts Rules of Order, and I'm not a Roberts Rules person. I've never studied it because I never really thought I needed to, because most people, you can dialogue in a common sense and try to get through scenarios to try to have a better understanding. But when you were reading off that stuff this morning or whatever about Robert rules, and even you said about some of the county, the counties delineation of how the meetings need to go, you left what I would call ambiguity. You said, "Well, this is what we're going to go by," but then you also, I heard several sentences say, well, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have it written down, that you could fluctuate within any of those Roberts rules or the counties. And so, you know, hopefully, we can dialogue without having so much rules, but because of the situation that we've let develop in this county for the last year or whatever, then it seems like, yeah, we have to have more structure. But even in that structure that you laid out, it's like you still, as the chairman, get to ambiguously say, well, pick and choose how that happens.
Yeah. Mr. Moore, your time has expired. It is 11:04. I am going to respond to the people online, but it is 11:04, and we are taking a five-minute recess. The deodorant and a urinal.
[laughter]
That's not, that's not a snack. Sorry, ladies.
Warning on the label.
All right. I never got that close.
I don't even think the bugs touched that.
All right. It is 11:12, and we are coming out of recess, returning to public comment, and I'm gonna start with Christine Noella. But, and I just wanna put on the record, so that hopefully, we don't forget that the clerk has a record, as a, as a correspondence to read in, so hopefully, the gallery will remind me, let's not forget altogether. Ms. Noella.
Hi. I just wanted to reiterate what I was saying earlier in the last one, and many others have said about the HR department being put back under the prosecuting attorney. That would be a more satisfying place for that. It just seems corrupt, being underneath the very board that is supposed to be keeping in order. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Noella. Ms. DiBali.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, excellent. I have just a couple of comments and questions here.
Sherry, would you, would you introduce yourself, so that the record, it'll be who it is, and I'll give you an extra 10 seconds.
Thank you. I apologize. This is Sherry DiBali for the record. My concerns are about the county fair audit, and the fact that, I'm pretty sure, and I'd have to go back through my, my records and recordings, of course, I'm pretty sure that Mike Rosedale, clerk, had said that he would have happily done an audit if he had been asked, but he was never asked. Now, having said that, all of a sudden, Clarissa Costa is being brought up as the responsible party, and I'm concerned that she is being thrown under the bus. However, the bigger problem would be, if nobody goes back and looks at the previous audits, then everything is gonna be dumped on Darcy's head, and she will have been thrown under the bus, as the only person that could have, or would have, committed improprieties concerning the fair. Now, the way I understand law enforcement, and I do have a limited amount of knowledge on this, the county is the victim here, and the county needs to file a complaint so that it can be investigated.
Read that.
And it is my understanding that the prosecutor nor law enforcement have authority to investigate certain things without a county complaint as a victim. I'd like to know why the county has not filed a complaint for them to investigate this problem. We do know that there was a laptop of Darcy's, and it was in control of the county for a time. I don't think that it still is, but I, you know, I don't know if they ever looked at it or not. But it does bring to mind the fact that the county should have filed a complaint on this, so that it could be investigated by law enforcement, and therefore, if anybody else was responsible for anything, that would be looked at, and Darcy wouldn't have been, you know, dumped to hold all responsibility for everything, when she may not have done anything wrong. We don't know, because it did not get investigated. Now, as far as the ICCO goes, there was a group sometime back, that met every Monday night, under the guise of watching Monday Night Football in a public restaurant slash bar, or whatever you wanna call it. This included many elected officials. And I say "under the guise of," because a lot of them had no clue who was even playing after they had their little night of football. They did, however, discuss a lot of business. It was not an official group. They may or may not have taken notes, it doesn't really matter, but I don't see that as a whole lot different from other groups, such as the ICCO, being allowed to gather and do whatever it is they feel like doing. So that's it. Thank you very much.
You're most welcome. And Ms. DiBali, I will seek the information that you have requested. I will put in some public records, request to find out how that worked, because those are good questions. I'm very curious to see what we shall find, so.
So, Sherry, the prosecutor does not necessarily have to have somebody press charges or initiate an investigation. If a prosecutor is aware that a crime could have, or may have been committed, he is authorized under the duties of his office to pursue that. And so, in the event that a prosecutor had that suspicion and chose not to do it, he would be derelict in duties. And so, the fact that all these questions are out there, and nothing has ever been investigated or looked at from law enforcement or the prosecutor's side, for me, is extremely concerning and highly suspicious. But that's just me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the Bonner County Board of Commissioners have a responsibility to file that complaint as well?
Ms. DiBali, we will get back to you, but we are not engaging in dialogue, just like our ordinance says. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Hutchings.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Hutchings. Who are you?
This is, I wanna make sure you can hear me before I say it. This is.
We lost you.
Lost me?
You're somewhat breaking up. Go ahead, please continue.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Spencer, but I don't know who you are.
My name is Spencer Hutchings, and I'd like to, that a lack of transparency has kinda transformed the perception our county citizens have of the really good-hearted, kind people that have taken valuable time from their lives to volunteer to run our fair, and I think it's a real shame. I'd like to state that a person was interviewed by law enforcement over suspected crimes involving public money, and subsequently, that person passed under circumstances requiring an investigation by law enforcement. A check into said suspected finances by law enforcement seems like a step that, if ignored, would lead to a great deal of suspicion by the public, which has happened, and we all are quite suspect as to what really went on there. Whether you think this person took funds or did not take funds, we all wanna know. A general lack of transparency is glaringly obvious here. The amount of effort to obfuscate, I can't say that word today, and bury financial deals of the fair, dealings of the fair, is, is pretty staggering. You know, the amount of trouble it's been gone through to try and bury the financial dealings of the fairground by members of this board and other folks in the county, is, and past members of the board, is staggering to me, the amount of effort that's going forward, and I hope all the members of the public notice that, and I think they have. And, you know, you just stated, Luke, that the commissioners are the only ones that can audit, and you were followed closely by, by that statement, and Steve saying that the prosecutor should have done the audit. And, you know, I, I think the commissioners, the sheriff, the prosecutor, they all need to take this financial scrutiny off the fair board, so that they can go back to doing their job of putting on a fair for the county. They need to go back to running the fair. You guys need to take on the responsibility that you're currently shirking, and figure out what happened to the county taxpayers' money, if anything happened to that money. You need to reassure the county taxpayers that the money is not missed, or that it did disappear, and if it did disappear, whoever was responsible for that needs to be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. We all know that fair board meeting minutes exist. We all know fair board bank records exist. We all know fair board employees, that were employees of the county, had laptops, and they exist. All of these things need to be closely scrutinized by an outside auditor until we find the truth. If any current or former employee involved in criminal behavior with our fair board funds, then that person should be prosecuted. I call on the county commissioners to file a complaint, to initial an official, to initiate an official investigation on any possible missing funds. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna see if I can recap, because this is what I heard. According to Spencer Hutchings, that you were guilty until proven innocent, you would like the taxpayer to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially to conduct an audit after the responsible body does, has submitted a record saying, we don't have the records that they, according to Idaho law, they were required to maintain, and that we are shirking our responsibility by doing our jobs. Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Ms.
And since you made a comment.
Technology, thank you. We are gonna move on to, we're gonna move on to Ms. Dana Sanchez.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For the record, I'm Dana Sanchez. I'm the twin sister to Darcey Smith. I have a fairly short letter to read. It's really just questioning, how in the world could the fair board have no bookkeeping for 10 years? That makes no sense. So my twin sister lost her life over this hostile work environment at work, at the fairground. She died either, either of a suicide or homicide. That is still not clear. Her character was shamed in a questionable audit, and now statements are made that they have no bookkeeping. So personally, I want justice for my twin sister. I want her name cleared. I believe 100% in her innocence. If this was your family member, you would want clarity as well. There's a lot of information I know of, and I'm seeking the truth. I'm asking for help. Too much time has gone by, and I've been waiting patient, and so please, I'm asking you, as commissioners, to help with this situation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sanchez, and our deepest condolences still. Darcy was a valued member of Bonner County, and I know that she is very, very greatly missed.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment section for today's agenda, and now we will get into our commissioners' reports. And last week, we started with Commissioner Williams, so that means that today will be the District One Commissioner Report first.
I got nothing.
Thank you for.
There's snow out there, road and bridges doing a good job.
Thank you for your efficiency, Mr. Bradshaw. All right. Commissioner Williams is absent, so I will go into my comments and my report. Couple of, mine is relatively brief. I have been preparing the ICCO packet for this week, and I was preparing for the fair board, which I attended last night, but I will start with the open meeting law as brought forward. So, according to the open meeting manual, which is the Idaho Open Meeting Law, when, what public bodies or agencies covered by the open meeting law? All meetings of a governing body of a public agency shall be open to the public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting except as otherwise provided by this act. A governing body is defined to mean the members of any public agency with the authority to make decisions for or recommendations to a public agency regarding any matter. So, when the ICCO created itself out of whole cloth and determined that they had authority to advise the Bonner County Board of Commissioners, but to operate in clandestine meetings, I mean, it's question number one in the open meeting law manual. It is question number one, and this will be submitted in my packet. So, when the ICCO met behind closed clandestine fashion to then advise the Board of County Commissioners, and I will read from, each county official is a top elected official who is in no way inferior to the B O C C in its domain. Well, the domain of those other elected officials are not in regards to the audit. Based on our preliminary research, we have determined that ARPA funds are likely subject to Section 303, and consequently, until such time as Bonner County can developably and adequately implement a 303 program, the ICCO believes ARPA funds cannot be expended. So apparently, the ICCO was formed to give guidance to the B O C C, and then therefore, according to my understanding of the open meeting law, and I read pretty well, any members of a public agency with the authority to make decisions for or recommendations, there is the key component, or recommendations. So, when that group of elected officials met in secret, without agendas, and then used the privilege associated with it, of which I have seen to where these meetings were for critical infrastructure, personally, I struggle with that, and I think the open meeting law is pretty clear when it says, the people of the state of Idaho, in creating the instruments of government that serve them, do not yield their sovereignty to the agency so created. And so when we talk of transparency, I find talk of transparency is always an interesting perspective, especially when we take into account that no elected, oh wait, excuse me, there's only one elected member of the Board of County Commissioners that is part of the ICCO, and that would be Commissioner Williams. Now, getting back to my reports, I have a couple of brief things. Starting in January, I will be traveling every other week, on Wednesdays, to the Idaho Association of Counties, who I referenced, which is the legislative body that provides policy ideas and references to counties, and then we also work with the legislature trying to advocate for county government. And the Idaho Association of Counties Legislative Committee, which I sit on, and which is why I'll be traveling every other week, reviewed the 11 legislative resolutions passed by the IAC General Membership of the IAC Annual Conference, and we've identified five key priorities. So these are the priorities of the IAC. One is the hospital property tax exemption. The IAC supports reinstating the Board of County Commissioners' review in the hospital property tax exemption process. We propose narrowing the exemption to strictly, to apply strictly to properties, meaning the definition of a hospital and excluding certain ancillary facilities. Additionally, we advocate for the reintroduction of a charitable element to the exception. This is something that has been taking place with mega corporations, and it results to the taxpayer of a tax shift, and that is why it is a priority for the IAC. Area of impact agreements. The IAC endorses amendments to the Local Land Use Planning Act to enhance the effectiveness of area impact agreements, ensuring prudent and responsible land use planning. A good example of that is the Providence Road hearing, where it was in the ACI of Kootenay, and Kootenay would have liked to have had their rules put into place in that subdivision. And so what the IAC is looking for, and they are working in coordination with the Idaho Association of Cities as well, is clarity from the legislature about who gets what, where, and when in regarding, in regards to ordinance, and it becomes a big deal financially if you are developing a property. Number three, essential emergency medical services. The IAC advocates for establishing EMS as an essential service, granting counties the authority and accountability to ensure the provision of reasonable EMS services across the county. This includes the creation of a state EMS fund to support a sustainable EMS system. Forty-four counties, 44 different ways of doing things. Bonner County has a robust EMS system. We have one of the best EMS systems, and I'm gonna brag and say it, just because I wanna be proud, that we have the best EMS in the state, and I'm grateful for that, because when I slip and fall on the ice, I want the best EMS to come to save me. A lot of other counties, such as, and I'm not picking on them, but Idaho County, it's huge with a very small population, it's very difficult. Our neighbor to the north, Boundary County, very big, only 12,000 people. Our neighbor to the north, Boundary County, very big, only 12,000 people, it's very difficult to be able to fund EMS. Bonner County's voters in the early 2000s through the Board of Commissioners chose to develop a robust EMS system and I am very grateful and I intend to continue to support that. However, with this priority, Bonner County would be more falling into the area of a grandfathered system, but there is a big conversation regards to essential services for the state. Forty-four different counties, forty-four different needs, forty-four different groups of people. Number four, to increase the 911 fee. The IAC supports suggesting the 911 fee from up, from up to one, from $1 up to $2 providing essential funding to maintain and enhance emergency response services. Is a massive struggle for us to have dispatchers and work with 911. We are updating continually with the different growth that was set years ago and it has not been changed. Your 911 fee is associated with your telephone bill and that is how, and the sheriff in Bonner County is the one who operates dispatch and the Sheriff's Association and the IAC are advocating for that position to be able to continue to provide important essential services that keep our citizens safe. Number five, large-scale solar and wind energy facility citing. IAC supports legislation to mandate state citing teams to assist counties in evaluating, approving and citing large-scale energy projects, ensuring responsible and efficient development. Down south on Bureau of Land Management lands, there are proposals to develop massive wind farms and there are, a lot of these on federal lands are outside the purview of the county, but the county and the state would like to have a say in what goes on within the county and the state. So those are the five IAC legislative priorities. Second thing that I would bring to attention is that there, I was sent this by Mayor-elect Grim and for 2023, small county rankings in the United States, there is I think 650 of the 650 that were measured, there's a total of around 4,500 counties across the United States. Bonner County was number 50 for small county rankings, which I think that's great. And that concludes my report. It is 11:33 and I wouldn't, we took a recess 33 minutes ago, are you prepared to go into executive session or would you like to take a five-minute recess, Commissioner?
I'm ready.
Do you have to read your letter?
Oh, thank you. This is, I appreciate the assist. Good job. I stand corrected.
Kids don't want to read her letter.
Thank you Amy. I don't know whose letter it is, it's something that was submitted to the clerk.
It's from a member of the public, her name is Cara.
Madam Clerk, would you state your name for the record and just say what you're doing?
Elisa Shofol for the record, I am reading this. At the request of one of the commissioners, it is for Cara Ripley. Dear County Commissioners, for some reason the audio would not work for my public comment. My mic was on, I checked three times and the tech person was trying to unmute me, I could see him trying, but for whatever reason it did not work. Would you consider reading this comment at the next meeting? This is in regards to last Tuesday's meeting. I had to hop on late today because my, I homeschool my children and our lesson went long today. I initially wanted to comment about the hiring of Holland and Hart, but I feel compelled to say this first. Today my school lesson for my eight and 10-year-old was on effective listening and communication. My children were in that meeting today, they would look at me with confusion. Everything I am teaching them not to do, you guys are doing. I see three adults, two grown men and one who supposedly leads a church flock showing the most disrespect and shouting vulgarities. It's an embarrassment to our county, to the public and especially to yourselves. Bonner County is becoming the laughingstock of North Idaho, maybe the state. If that is your goal, then you are doing a great job, but if it isn't, some deep self-reflection needs to take place. Y'all are supposed to be leaders, examples for our community, that includes children who will one day take your place. My actual reason for coming on was to talk about my objections of hiring Holland and Hart. They are no friend of the people of Idaho and our first A rights. They have orchestrated a smear campaign against People's Rights Network and are trying to shut down our communications network. We offer canning classes, we brought in the water board to help people obtain their water rights, 7B CARE spoke at last month's meeting, et cetera. Holland and Hart was temporarily successful at shutting down our website last week and this is all over us organizing to help get a baby back with its nursing mother. They will continue to try to get the website offline. They brought in so-called witnesses from CA telling the jury we are white supremacists and the typical wording we hear from those trying to shut down people they don't agree with. Ironically, the baby we stood for was Mexican, but they failed to enter that into trial evidence. I don't want my tax money to be spent on these evildoers. Bonner County should not have anything to do with them. Thank you for your time, Cara Ripley.
Thank you Madam Clerk. Is there any other things before I entertain a motion to go into executive session that I may have muddled? Thank you. Executive session, sir?
Under.